Ready? Did you want to start or you want me to start?
I think Doug may be coming in this way.
Okay, thank you all for coming. The purpose of this press conference is to issue a respectful request to the Board of the Phoenix Union High School District to reconsider a decision they made which goes against their own administration, the educators at two high schools, Betty Fairfax and Carl Hayden High School, in rejecting grant applications for armed school safety officers. One of the board members was quoted in the paper as saying the reason that she voted against it was that the officers are bound by law beyond district policies. So the implication is that she feels that they're not bound by law, that district policy can override the law. As a former Attorney General, I find that thought shocking and I'm hoping she'll reconsider and realize all American citizens are obligated to follow the law and school policies cannot override the law. We, the Department of Education, would pay for the officers that were requested by these schools, approved by the administrators, and strongly supported by the teachers, many of whom do not feel safe in that environment. And you'll hear from some of them. I'll just tell you, I'll introduce them individually after I say a few other things, but we have with us certified teacher Susan Groff. Being a certified national union, national board certified teacher is a huge accomplishment in the teaching profession. Current Phoenix Union teacher Pam Kelly and Phoenix Union teacher Mark Williams, you'll hear from them in a little bit. The educators spend each day on the campuses and they see firsthand the need for officers. The conditions there are not safe according to the teachers and the administrators and the school board should give some thought to the safety of their people. And that's the reason we're asking them to reconsider this decision. I'd like to give an example that illustrates the importance of this. And let me say that I have, for a long time, been saying my nightmare is that some maniac will invade one of our schools. This has happened in other states and could happen here, kill 20 kids, and the parents will never recover from that. I know that because I lost a child myself. And if they were to find out after that happened that the school could have had a police officer paid for by us and decided not to, you can imagine how the parents would feel about that decision making. And our view is the school board should listen to their teachers, administrators, and staff, and they should give them the safety that they're calling for because they know firsthand the unsafe conditions there. Now, the school board member that I quoted also said the money should be spent on counselors. We do spend school safety money on counselors because I feel that if a student comes to school upset about what's happening at home, they may not be able to learn and they need someone to talk to. But that's not a substitute for protecting their lives, which is what we're talking about. And a counselor can do a lot of good, but they can't protect against an invasion. We had an illustration of this in Tucson where not long ago, a police officer had been on the school only two weeks, and he noticed a gate open, so he investigated. And he found somebody there who had a knife and a gun and said he was going to kill the kids to make them famous. And it happened to be 20 kids, just as I'd been talking about, and some grownups in there. The police officer, thankfully, was very experienced and brave, and he did not wait for backup. He arrested the guy right away and thereby prevented all those 20 kids and the grownups from being killed and the parents from having their lives ruined as a result of losing their children. This could happen in Phoenix Union. And if the school board, if the people in the school and the administrators say, "We need this for our safety," and the school board rejects that, and then the unthinkable actually happened, it would illustrate what a bad decision this was. The grant money for these officers is still available, and we are respectfully asking that the Phoenix Union School Board reconsider the decision that they made. The next person who will talk is Phoenix Union teacher Mark Williams.
Thank you. My name is Mark Williams. I'm actually a retired teacher from the district. Did an entire career with them, but before that, I did an entire career as a law enforcement officer. When I was with Phoenix Union, I was an English teacher. I was an English department chair. And because of my experience, my background, I unfortunately was voluntold that I was going to participate in their school safety program years ago. It morphed and developed into training for teachers. And what the superintendent is saying is absolutely true. The administrators from the district superintendent, who was a teacher for years, her staff, principals, teachers, classified people are all concerned about the safety on the campus. There had been gun issues on the campus. There have been shootings on campus. And when they, there's a small vocal group outside that has caused those SROs to go away, and now we're trying to bring them back. And the same vocal group is screaming the same thing. And the board approved it. Now, the board is not on campus. The board goes to board meetings, then they go back to their regular lives. They don't know what's going on. They would tell you if you asked them, "We know what's going on." No, you don't. You have not been in my classroom in 20 years. I'm now on my third career of retirement, so that's a good thing. But I have been helping schools, principals, districts are craving training. They're craving help from law enforcement. Now, one thing I want to say to what the superintendent was saying, SROs, metal detectors, these types of interventions will not stop, let me say that again, will not stop school violence. Influence through relationship can stop school violence. If you have an SRO officer who teaches classes, who plays basketball, I've seen him play basketball, I've seen him talk over lunches with students, and all of a sudden, the student gets a completely different view of this person in uniform. That influence and that relationship will flip that student. Problem is, we'll never know it because the student isn't acting out. But that's the only thing in my professional career, in my professional experience, the only thing that will stop school violence. They are a deterrent. They're a very good deterrent. So if you have any questions, I guess I'll be around for a while. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. The next speaker will be national board certified teacher from Phoenix Union, Susan Groff.
I am retired. I taught in Phoenix Union for many years. I'm still a resident in the community, and I am very active and I'm concerned about our students. All of our students deserve compassion and they deserve protection. Replacing school officers with metal detectors is risky. Metal detectors can't build trust. They can't notice when something's off, and they can't step in a situation when a situation is escalating. Let's not wait for something awful to happen before we recognize the value of having safety personnel who actually know our students and our schools. I urge you to reconsider. School resource officers are invaluable. They can help stop problems before they start, I fully support having school resource officers at all of our schools and I urge you to consider that they help create the environment in which our students can learn because they keep us safe. And thank you for your reconsideration.
Thank you. And, and finally we'll have Phoenix Union teacher Pam Kelly.
Good morning. I am Pamela Kelly, Phoenix Union High School District educator. I've been at Trevor Brown High School for 17 years as an educator and working with students. I am adamantly stating that all Phoenix Union High School District campuses must install metal detectors and SROs, school resource officers, for the safety and security of all students, staff and visitors. Each day, families await the safe return of their loved ones from our campuses. Metal detectors are proactive and preventative measures to keep all individuals safe versus reactive, addressing an unthinkable, monstrous act. We do not want our state of Arizona to become another tragic statistic due to this heinous act sweeping across our nation and taking precious, precious lives. Florida State University had a mass shooting days ago where two people died. Funeral arrangements are underway. No metal detectors. Wilmer Hutchins High School in Texas, days ago, had a shooting where five were injured and deemed as a mass shooting. No metal detectors. Horrendous acts of violence. Now is the time to take action and be proactive and preventative and ensure that not one life is taken in the Phoenix Union High School District due to a school shooting. I have a cordial message for our Phoenix Union High School District Governing Board. Always, always make safety and security our districts, of our district's campuses of the utmost importance and priority. Respectfully. Thank you.
And I just give you, let you know that since we took office, we've increased the number of police officers in the schools from 190 to 565. And that illustrates that it's all paid for through an appropriation from the legislature through the Department of Education and we're hoping that Phoenix Union will, will do the same. Happy to take questions.
Superintendent, as you mentioned, another big part of the equation is counselors. Do you know right now what the allocation is roughly for counselors versus SROs?
We, we have funded more counselors than SROs.
Okay. Rough breakdown or no?
I don't remember the numbers. Mike, do you know, remember the numbers?
Approximately 630 counselors.
630 counselors and 565 police officers, school resource officers.
And the most recent federal assessment of school attacks done by the Secret Service showed that all of these student attackers had experienced social stressors on campus and most had shown behavioral issues that could have been observed on campus. And I think that also goes to the idea of having support staff or counselors. Given that Arizona has the worst counselor to student ratio, do you have also a request for the legislature about funding counselors? And could any of the teachers, you know, maybe describe whether you saw counselors or support staff as also making a difference in this area and to what degree?
I'd like to say that counselors are not first responders. Counselors help us after the.
Do you want to come to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'd like to point out that counselors are very important and our students deserve compassion. However, counselors and teachers are, we are not first responders, so we need an SRO also. Thank you.
Yes. When she says they're not first responders, if they try to stop a shooter, they'll be the first ones to be shot. And we saw that in one of the, one of the mass ones in Massachusetts. The principal ran at the shooter with bare hands and was shot and killed.
Well, do you have, do you have a message about the level of counselors, knowing they can make a difference in prevention?
Well, as I say, we're always asking for, for more school safety money from the legislature. They have a lot of demands and I don't know which ones they'll fulfill, but, but we've, we're always asking for more money for, for school safety. Did you want to say something?
I am a certified.
Just a second.
Oh, yeah. Go to the microphone.
Please.
So every teacher, every teacher's a counselor. You know, five or six periods, I got 30 kids in a class when I was working, every one of them's on my radar. And you can tell because you're with them every day, then that teacher can refer to counseling. Okay? So there's your, there's your real first responder.
Did you want to say something?
Yes, I would. I'm an educator in Phoenix Union. I do work with students, but I'm also a certified counselor. I was a counselor in the state of Georgia, is still certified here in Arizona. I would love for you guys to ask me about Trevor Brown High School and how much we need metal detectors in our schools. As a counselor, there are people out there who counseling and even student support from social workers, I think it's beneficial, but I really would love to talk about the dangers in my school and metal detectors. I'd be more than happy.
And school resource officers.
And school resource officers, which we used to have five days a week. Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone? Yes.
Unrelated matter? Is that okay?
Sure.
So before there was a change by a staker of, from a judge, today was the deadline for districts and charters to sign the DEI compliance letters? So what happens in the coming weeks if schools don't do that? Have you heard any districts that aren't decide, that haven't or decided not to comply? What does that process look like?
We have not heard of any districts saying they will not comply. A vast majority have already complied and the decision came from a single district judge in New Hampshire, I think it was. My, my view, I have some knowledge because I was attorney general, is that that will be reversed by the US Supreme Court. In the meantime, we'll, you know, we will, we, our deadline is today, I think, and we're, we're taking the information, we'll put it on our website so people know. And then as to, at what point there's an actual cutoff of funds, we'll take our instructions from the federal government. Anybody else?
One other unrelated question, also about school spending.
Yeah.
Expenses, I should say. Schools in APS territory are seeing utility costs raise about eight percent this last year and in the coming year. SRU territory, schools in those areas, later this year we'll see their, their bills fill up as well. The legislature used to allocate more funds for rising utility costs many years ago. They don't anymore. Have you heard of any concerns about the cost schools face in paying for AC and electricity? And is there anything more that can be done to help these schools accommodate the increase in the better?
Yeah. Well, if you followed my, my state of education speeches to the legislature, you know that I have emphasized the need for more funding, particularly from Prop 123, which comes out of the land trust rather than increased taxes. And the, the emphasis I've, I've been putting on is we got to pay our teachers more because we're losing more than our coming into the profession. And you can imagine the ultimate result if we don't take strong action on that. No, no school has talked to me about the utility costs, but all these things are interrelated. And I, from my whole professional life have been an advocate, including when I was in the legislature in the 1990s for more funding for our schools.
I don't know if you've already commented on this before, but there's a lot of discussion nationally about the elimination of the federal Department of Education.
Yes.
How would that impact our state Department of Education? How would that change your job?
Well, my hope is that those duties will be assigned to the state departments of education. I have 600 people here who do nothing but work on Arizona education. They know our schools. Other officers don't have anything like that. And when the announcement was first made, I got calls from a lot of journalists expecting me to criticize the president's decision to eliminate the federal Department of Education. And I said, if he eliminates the, the federal Department of Education, the first thing that'll happen is, and they were expecting criticism, I said, I'll throw a party because I can do a lot better job than the federal department can do. And I can give you a lot of instances of irrational demands we've gotten from the federal department because they're in an ivory tower in Washington and they don't know Arizona schools. Anybody else? Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you for doing this.
Thank you, guys.